Bryan City Council, for Monday, April 3rd, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. First item on our agenda this evening is to approve the minutes of the March 6th meeting and also the meetings of the March 10th Joint Special Meeting with DPA.
Move to approve.
I'll say.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Second item is a hearing of public concerns. Understand we have a public hearing for agricultural parcels.
I'll go ahead and address that now, if that's okay.
Yeah, of course.
Similar to what we had done a month ago, certain parcels, if they are agricultural use, every five years they need to get the ag district renewed. And after the last meeting, I had Isaac Properties approach me. They had two parcels as well, so we put the legal notice in the paper and advertised it last Monday, authorizing the public hearing tonight, and we're having the public hearing. So if there's any questions or concerns on it, we can address them. If not, the public hearing has been held, and we will address an item later on legislation. So unless there's any questions. Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Are there any other public concerns? Yes, sir. Please come forward and state your name.
Stephen Cox, Huntington Drive. Wish to comment again on the repaving efforts of the Eastland Estate roads, especially Huntington Drive. The area is still gravel on the roads. There are some areas in which the stone and gravel are adhering fairly well, but in those zones, the cracks that they cover are now through the stone that was laid on top of them, open to the atmosphere and the environment. The plowing of the roads, which was necessary due to the snowfalls that we've had, ended up redistricting the loose gravel. Unfortunately, one of those distributions was into the front yards of various individuals living on Huntington Drive. Particularly if going down the street, they made a, the street made a right-hand turn. Those seem to be the heaviest deposited with the snow being thrown out in front of the plow and landing on the grass. Unfortunately, I have had small deposits of gravel in my front yard. In talking with a neighbor, he was saying that he had a problem with the loose gravel after the application last year, in that when he was mowing a section of his yard, a piece of gravel flew up and hit him in the eyeglasses, damaging the eyeglass. Had he not been wearing glasses, he would have lost an eye, at the very least, if not killed. The grass has to be mowed according to ordinance. Well, it's dangerous to do that when there is loose gravel in the yards. I don't know whether you can use your leaf vacuum device to lift the gravel out, and the deposit being primarily within the first three, four feet of the roadway. And I think they can cover that, I'm not sure. But something has to be done. This is not a cure. You didn't even get through the whole winter before the cracks occurred, and that's a problem. I mean, if you're gonna fix it, fix it right.
Can I address the stones in the, I've lived in my home for 25 years. The end of my driveway is gravel, all right? The rest of it is cement, but the end of it is gravel. Every spring, I have gravel in my stone from where they plowed the street. All I do is go get a rake, and I rake it back over into my driveway, along with the grass clumps that they usually get in there. I don't like it, but I do it because I know the city cannot prevent from doing that. And I would rather have my street plowed and be able to get out on my street than worry about the gravel in my driveway. And I have to do that because I can't mow over the gravel that's laying there because of the stones, like you said.
Okay.
So as far as that goes, I don't know what the solution is to that, Mr. Cox. I honestly don't. But I'm 80 years old. I just go out and do it because it has to be done.
Okay. The, again, not everybody on the street is capable of doing that. We do have some elderly, and I'm not including myself quite yet in that category. But if I were to come to your yard and throw garbage in, you would expect me to be responsible to get the stuff out.
But we have eight, over 8,000 people in this city. They cannot be responsible to go and rake everybody's, the stones out of everybody's yard. That's impossible.
Well, I would suggest that if you designed a plow that wouldn't throw the stones, the snow up to the side, you'd make a small fortune on that.
You find that, let us know. We'll probably buy one.
But no, at this particular point in time, it is something that needs to be attention paid to it, and you may well have injuries to the population from them mowing where they have to mow according to ordinance. So that's, it's a lose-lose situation for us.
I guess I don't understand what you expect them to do.
Well, like I said, if-
You want the city to come back and rake out all your yards. Is that what you're saying?
It doesn't necessarily have to be raking, but removing the gravel from the yard would be a definite-
Well, that would have to be raking. I don't know how else they would get it out of there.
Well, a bucket and a toy shovel from a sandbox might do it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cox.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Any other public, public concerns at this time? If not, we'll move on to the third item on our agenda, which is the Clerk Treasurers Report for February.
Counsel, suspend. Present with the Clerk Treasurers Report for the month ending February 28, 2023.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Item number four is an ordinance. Pat, would you please number and read?
Is ordinance number 14, 2023, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Smith Paving and Excavating for the project known as Will Street SRTS-Bryan City Schools.
Good evening. A couple weeks ago, we received bids for the Safe Routes to School program. Just refreshing your memory on that, there was $400,000 worth of funding on that. We have to provide 10% match. So of the $382,000 bid, we will be responsible for $38,200, and you'll see that later, and I think we're gonna establish a new fund and so forth. So the easements have all been obtained last fall, plans are approved, and we will be ready to start construction. I do not have a start date yet. We just have to have a pre-construction meeting, and it, we're dictated by ODOT on when they're able to come out and do that. But I would expect summer construction, like normal. But with that, I would, if you have no issues, I would request you to suspend the rules and authorize me to proceed.
We do expect that to be completed by fall?
Yeah, I think September 15th, I think, is our completion date, but it's bitterly enough. I, I'm not concerned about that. I think it'll be one of the first jobs they'll do once they're ready for it, so.
All right, thank you.
Because Smith Paving is the company that's doing it, and they do a lot of subcontracting work for other contractors. So some of their later work will be getting caught up on like a road project where they come in later and do the sidewalk. So I think this might be one that they'll try and get done fairly quick. I'd like to say it'd be done in May, but I don't know yet.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy? Rick?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Next item is an ordinance. Pat, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number 15, 2023, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Fence and Contracting LLC for the project known as 2023 South Lynn Street Storm Sewer Improvements.
This project is a small storm sewer project, South Lynn Street, starting at South Street and heading north. We're gonna get the last 12 or so residents there to storm sewer in front of them and provide them with taps. We're doing this in advance of a pending Lynn Street Waterline Project that is a joint project between the city and the utilities office. So we wanna get the underground complete before we do that and repave the street. And I'm still waiting on a little more grant funds. We'll see if I can get a little bit more to help cover that project as well. So I've never worked with fencing contracting before, but small project. I called a couple other references, and there was no issues, so I think we'll be fine with them.
I'll move to suspend.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Next item is another ordinance. Pat, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number 16, 2023, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Dangbar Excavating LLC for the project known as 2023 South Portland Street Extension.
This is a project we talked about a couple months ago, and I asked you to allow me to go out for bids just to see what it would cost. I had estimated around $900,000, but the bids came in around, 743 was the low bid, 781 was the next, and 968. Again, this is basically from the senior center south down to Fountain Grove Drive, and mainly just to provide another avenue for traffic to get through emergency services and whatnot. So if you concur that this would be a wise project for us to do this year for our capital project, I would request you authorize me to proceed with this.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Yes. And I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
With that, I'm still working with the Isaacs on getting the right-of-way dedication plan. I wanted to get this done first before they dedicated the right-of-way, so we'll come back at a future meeting, and they'll actually give us the street right-of-way for the other half of this. We already have half of this dedicated currently as part of the Autumn Chase subdivision. We're gonna pick up the other half from them. So you, we will come back with that in the future. I just didn't much think we forgot. We do this first and make sure we're doing it, and then we'll ask for the right-of-way, so.
One comment I wanted to make.
Yes, sir.
It was encouraging to see the number of bids that we got.
Yeah, very pleased. Very pleased. Yeah, yeah, I'm happy. Yep. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Item number seven on our agenda is a resolution. Pat, would you please number and read?
Resolution number 26, 2023, a resolution providing for the establishment of a new fund. This is a fund to be established for the Safe Route to Schools. The type of money that's being used for that, they need, we need to set up the new funds, so it's fund number 415.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Item number eight is a resolution. Pat, would you please number and read?
Resolution number 27, 2023, resolution providing for an inter-fund cash advance. And this is a cash advance for the 401 Capital Improvement Fund to the 415 fund that was just established for the Safe Routes to School, $343,906.78.
I'll move to suspend.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Okay, item number nine is an ordinance. Pat, would you please number and read?
Is ordinance number 17, 2023, an ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the City of Bryan for the month ending April 30, 2023. The transfer of funds from the 1% income tax, $200,000, to the general fund. 1% income tax, $80,000, to a 203 street fund. And then there's a transfer of the 1, the half percent income tax, $400,000, to the 401 Capital Improvement Fund. And then from the 401 Capital Improvement Fund, $38,000, to 1187, to the 415 Safe Routes to School project, which is our 10%.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Next item is another ordinance. Pat, would you please number and read?
Is ordinance number 18, 2023, north providing for annual appropriations for the City of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2023, declaring it an emergency. This is for appropriations to the Safe Routes to School Fund, 415 Fund, and the cost of the project, $382,118.65. Appropriate the money.
Move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Who knew there were so many steps to getting the-
Lot of safe routes.
That's right. Next item is a resolution. Pat, would you please number and read?
Resolution number 28, 2023, a resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road, salt, and contracts awarded in 2023.
Good evening. This is our annual resolution, giving us permission to participate in that program.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Judy? I'm sorry, Mary?
Mary, yes.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Thank you. Hey, Seisen.
Thanks, Seisen.
Thanks, Mark. I was just wondering, is there a minimum, is there a minimum amount of salt we have to purchase through that? We decide every year how much we ask for. Like this year, we asked for 600 tons, and we took all 600. Next year, we're gonna go with 800. It depends on how much we have in the barn at the end of this year. Just didn't seem like we used much, so I didn't know.
We didn't. Years past, we bought up to 1,200. But we have to buy 90% of what we bid.
Okay.
So, and they have to provide 110% of our bid amount if we need it.
Okay.
We have to buy 90%.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
In one of these days, we're gonna have winter again.
No need for me. No need for me.
That's right.
Sorry, everyone.
Item number 12 is another resolution.
Resolution number 29, 2023, a resolution approving the community reinvestment area tax exemption application as submitted by Williams County Port Authority.
So the Port Authority purchased a lot on South Main Street, down north of Circle K. That area does qualify for tax abatement. Residential construction is allowed on the main and high corridors in certain areas, so they're applying for, based on the funds, around $165,000. So that puts them in at a seven-year tax abatement. We will, like we always do when it's done, certify it and file it, but we're just asking for your permission to approve this.
I looked that up on Google. I wanted to see where that was, because when I grew up, my address was 903, only it wasn't that house. But, so I thought, this is interesting. So I looked it up. Are they gonna tear that down?
Oh, sorry, tore it down.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, there's a house that's gone, and there's a stone driveway that connects the street with the alley back there.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, that was actually, the land bank took that lot. It was either a foreclosure or share of sale or something, or it was a voluntary sign-off. I can't remember which it was. But the land bank took that and demolished it with grant funds that they had. And then the land bank actually had it for public auction, and I think Key Mansfield purchased it, I believe. I don't quote me on that, but someone had purchased that, and then he had sold it to the land, or to the Port Authority then, so.
I move to suspend.
I second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
903 South Main.
Item number 13 is a resolution. Pat, would you please number and read?
Resolution number 30, 2023, a resolution approving the community reinvestment area tax exemption application as submitted by PMA LLC.
So this is on the, this is the former Crispin Hay and Grain Building, which I call it the, it was landmark, country mark, I don't know what it was back in the day, but been a lot of things.
You were so young.
I'm in my 50s. I've never took grain there, but I remember, so. Yeah, so it was purchased a few years ago, and they're doing a lot of improvements there. There was a letter attached with the, with the legislation there. The main thing is remodeling of the building. I think he, trying to read what he has in here. I believe he wants to do either brewery or something along that line there, distillery of some type.
I think there's like two or three different things.
Yeah, which it's kinda irrelevant to us, really. I mean, he'll go through Planning Commission to get that if necessary, but he's gonna invest several hundred thousand dollars, so we wanna thank him for that and give him the opportunity to get a tax abatement.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy? Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Item number 14 is a resolution. Pat, would you please number and read?
Resolution number 31, 2023, a resolution approving the request to continue the inclusion of certain property in the agricultural district in accordance with Ohio Revice Code Section 929.02.
Again, per Ohio Revice Code Section 92902, we held the public hearing earlier tonight, and I would request that you approve this property to be continued as an agricultural district.
So move.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
As for suspension?
Yes.
Okay.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Next item on our agenda is an appointment to the Tree Commission.
Mr. Wheeler. You should have a letter from Ben asking permission to add Dave Shum to the Tree Commission. He'll replace Erica Lewis, who has since moved out of the area.
What's Dave Shum, though? Just teasing. Known him for like 50 years. He's a great guy, and it's a great, I think-
He'll have a plan.
I think it's great. I mean, I'd be more than proud to make a motion.
And I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number 16 is an appointment to zoning appeals.
Counsel, you also have a letter. We are recommending that you appoint A.J. Novacek to replace Bob Carter and fill his term, who has moved to our Planning and Zoning Board. So we are asking Mr. Novacek to fill that for the City of Bryan Board of Zoning Appeals. Mr. Novacek is joining us this evening. If you have any questions for A.J., but I would request your approval on this appointment.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a liquor permit.
You have the trick of all friends. Okay, so I'm gonna try to get this, get us through this. What we are asked, or what the State of Ohio is asking is if you would like a local hearing or if you would like to waive the hearing for Blueberry Hill to receive this liquor permit. So typically, in the past, you have done a motion to waive the hearing. If you so choose to do that, I would ask that you entertain that motion now.
I thought they already had a liquor permit.
Well, I did too, but it is a D1, so I think maybe they had a D2, which is what opened up that last D2 that CBSS asked for.
Okay, are they serving right now alcohol, or not?
Yes, but not, like a D1 is a little more extensive. A D2 is beer, wine, and some spirits.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we understood. Okay, perfect.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
We're moving to waive the hearing.
To waive the hearing.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's why.
I should have listened to John.
I screw this up every time.
I approve the way to hear.
And I'll second your approve the hearing, of the hearing.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to go around the room to see if anyone has anything further to add. Engineering?
No, sir.
Fire?
It is storm season, so make sure that your weather notifications are up to date, or www.ysc.com, which is here in May of last year, has not been on. Please call back and update your contact information. You'll get those.
Are we, are we getting, while you're up, are we, are we getting any input, feedback, or training as it relates to what's going on with the railway, hazardous railway bill? I saw there was training. I wasn't sure. I asked, did we send a person?
Training has been available. We actually had someone at one of the training sessions this last month. We typically try to partake in those regularly. Our hazmat team is knowledgeable. We need to send some additional, get some additional training just to keep folks up to date, but we've got a pretty good, pretty good background of that. It's been many years, but I have made the trip out to Pueblo, Arizona, to the Railroad Association's training facility out there, and there are still a few of us around that have done that, but it's been a number of years. Some local training, and again, we continue to make sure that we've got folks up to date on that. Some of the information that was out there, they said they had a tough time getting. We actually have those contacts, so we're able to use those apps. That's been part of our procedure. So we're well-versed with what's there, and we're well-aware of the hazard that is on the edge of the city, actually running through the city, and the number of trains and the amount of hazmat that goes through here.
Oh, no, that's why I'm asking. The amount of train traffic in northwest Ohio, specifically Williams County, is not minute, and-
Yeah, we are a major rail line, yes.
Yeah, it, a spill would affect a number of folks that would far outweigh the water issue that we had for 24 to 36 hours. You're talking about cleanup in three to six months with two to four years of ongoing testing. So I, I really, I think that's important. Thank you for what you've done and your people are doing to get the training and to know what's going on, et cetera. I know there's bills pending as it relates, I think the governor just either passed or is passing a bill on rail safety, et cetera. So I, I think it's very important that East Palestine is not the only place that this can happen. So I appreciate your efforts. Thank you for the information.
Anything further from the Street Department?[1361.13]